Meeting in a county commission.
It is six o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Thursday, January 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners. And I've asked Commissioner Tosterson if he'll lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Clark, I believe, to lead us in our pledge. If you can stand with us, please.
Dear one and Father, if our heavenly Father, Father God, thank you for blessing our community and blessing these gentlemen up here that make the decisions therefore. Thank you for your love. Thank you for blessing us and thank you for being our God. Bless this ceremony tonight and welcome these new, these new people that are going to be serving on the board. All in your Son Jesus' precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
One place, black hand apart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I believe first on our order of swearing in, I think our, our material is a little bit out of order. So I, I think we're going to swear in Commissioner Bob Duncan first. Mr. Duncan, thank you for your willingness to serve this community. And it's my honor to administer the oath of office. If you're ready to assume that office, if you raise your right hand, repeat after me.
I, Robert G. Duncan swear.
I, Robert G. Duncan swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Commissioner for Glen County.
Of Commissioner for Glen County.
In all matters which require my official action.
In all matters which require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And that I will so act.
And that I will so act.
As in my judgment.
As in my judgment.
Will be most conducive to the welfare and best interests.
Will be most conducive to the welfare. Will be most conducive to the welfare.
And best interests.
And best interests.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof.
I have been a resident thereof.
For the time required.
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
Rendered as such employee.
Rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I'm not the holder of.
That I'm not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of.
And that I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust.
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
For which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I, Robert G. Duncan swear.
I, Robert G. Duncan swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Commissioner for Glen County.
Of Commissioner for Glen County.
In all matters which require my official action.
In all matters which require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And that I will so act.
And that I will so act.
As in my judgment.
As in my judgment.
Will be most conducive to the welfare and best interests.
Will be most conducive to the welfare. Will be most conducive to the welfare.
And best interests.
And best interests.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof.
I have been a resident thereof.
For the time required.
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And a recipient of public funds.
And a recipient of public funds.
Rendered as such employee.
Rendered as such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I'm not the holder of.
That I'm not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of.
And that I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust.
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
For which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And that I will support the constitutions of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank Commissioner Rofalski. We'll win the axed.
Mr. Rofalski, thank you for your continued service to this community. It's my honor to administer the oath of office. If you're ready to assume that position, if you'll raise your right hand, please repeat after me. I, Walter Rofalski, swear.
I, Walter Rofalski, swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of Commissioner for Glen County.
Of Commissioner for Glen County.
In all matters which require my official action.
In all matters that require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And that I will so act.
And that I will so act.
As in my judgment.
As in my judgment.
Will be most conducive.
Will be most conducive.
To the welfare and best interests.
To the welfare and best interests.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof.
I have been a resident thereof.
For the time required.
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
I'm not the holder of.
I'm not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of.
And I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust.
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the constitutions.
And then I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For service rendered.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God. Next up is Commissioner Booker.
Mr. Booker, again, it's, it's, uh, thank you for your continued service to this community. It's my honor to administer the oath of office. If you're ready, please repeat after me. I, Alan Booker, swear.
I, Alan Booker, swear.
That I will well and truly discharge.
I will well and truly discharge.
The duties of Commissioner for Glen County.
The duties of Commissioner for Glen County.
In all matters which require my official action.
In all matters that require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And that I will so act.
And I will so act.
As in my judgment.
In my judgment.
Will be most conducive.
Be most conducive.
To the welfare and best interests.
To the welfare and best interests.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof.
I have been a resident thereof.
For the time required.
For the time required.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly, solemnly swear.
That I'm not the holder of.
That I'm not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Any unaccounted for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or any authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of.
And I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust.
Any office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Any foreign state.
Any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
That I am, that, that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the constitutions.
And I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For services rendered.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
And the Constitution of the state of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God. And last, we have Commissioner Tosterson.
Mr. Tosterson, again, thank you for your continued service to this community. It's my honor to administer the oath. If you're ready, raise your right hand or repeat after me. I, Samuel Tosterson, swear.
I, Samuel Tosterson, swear.
That I will well and truly discharge.
That I will well and truly discharge.
The duties of Commissioner for Glen County.
The duties of Commissioner for Glen County.
In all matters which require my official action.
In all matters that require my official action.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
To the best of my knowledge and skill.
And that I will so act.
And that I will so act.
In my judgment.
In my judgment.
Will be most conducive.
Will be most conducive.
To the welfare and best interests.
To the welfare and best interests.
Of the entire county.
Of the entire county.
I have been a resident thereof.
I have been a resident thereof.
For the required time.
For the required time.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
By the Constitution and laws of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
I'm not the holder of.
I'm not the holder of.
Any unaccounted for public money. Any unaccounted for public money.
Unaccounted for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Any, any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
And that I'm not the holder of.
And that I'm not the holder of.
Any office of trust.
An office of trust.
Under the government of the United States.
Under the government of, government of the United States.
Any other state.
In any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
Which I am prohibited from holding.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
By the laws of the state of Georgia.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
And that I am otherwise qualified.
To hold said office.
To hold said office.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
According to the Constitution of the United States.
And the laws of Georgia.
And the laws of Georgia.
And that I will support the constitutions.
And that I will support the constitutions.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
I do further solemnly swear.
I do further solemnly swear.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
That I am a citizen of the state of Georgia.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And being an employee of Glen County.
And the recipient of public funds.
And the recipient of public funds.
For services rendered.
For services rendered.
As such employee.
As such employee.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
Do hereby solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
And the Constitution of Georgia.
So help me God.
So help me God. Judge Scarlett, thank you. At this time, we'll open the floor for nominations of Chairman of the Glen County Board of Commissioners, and I would like to nominate Commissioner Rofalski.
Second.
Are, are there any other nominations?
There is no, there is no second.
No, okay. All right, all in favor of Commissioner Rofalski being Chairman of the Glen County Board of Commissioners, please raise your right hand. That is unanimous. Chairman Rofalski, I pass the go. Thank you, sir. Well, now I guess it's time to nominate a vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Wayne Neal as vice chair of the Board of Commissioners.
Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close nominations.
Okay, with that said, all in favor? No, no. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
First of all, I want to thank these guys for putting their faith in me. Now, we move on to appointments. For the Board of Health, Commissioner Booker. For the Brunswick Area Transportation System, Commissioner Duncan. For the Coastal Regional Commission, Commissioner Tosterson. For Joint Water and Sewer, Commissioner Neal. Finance Committee, Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Swett, and Commissioner Neal. For Pension, Commissioner Tosterson, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Duncan. Personnel, Commissioner Tosterson, Commissioner Clark, and Commissioner Duncan. For the Golden Isles Convention and Visitors Bureau, Commissioner Swett. I had to think of your name, David, I'm sorry. For the Brunswick Glen County Development Authority, I'm going to take that role. For the Brunswick, um, Golden Isles Chamber of Commerce, I'm also going to take that one. And the Glen County Airport Authority, Commissioner Neal. Okay, we can move on from there, Aaron.
You, you'll need to have the board ratify those appointments, Mr. Chairman. So just a, a motion and a second to ratify those appointments as, as you've named.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we ratify the appointments as presented.
Second.
Okay, it being approved and seconded, all in favor? Show of hands. Any negatives? Any against? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you'll also want to, uh, name a chair for each one of those subcommittees that, uh, we have on there, such as Personnel, Pension, and, um, Finance.
Okay, you said you just throw a curve. I think on Finance, Commissioner Booker, would you consider chairing that? Pension, um, Mr. Tosterson?
Yes.
Personnel, uh, Commissioner Clark? Okay. That's all of those there.
Correct, and then also a motion to ratify those, those chair appointments as well.
Okay, can I get that motion?
So moved. Second.
All right, and properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Any against? Thank you. We don't do anything in line of succession, do we?
You'll, you'll name the line of succession and then that'll also be ratified.
So that would be myself. And then Commissioner Neal, chair, vice chair, and then by time or?
However you want to do it.
Okay. Commissioner Booker, Commissioner Tosterson, Commissioner Clark, Commissioner Swett, Commissioner Duncan. That needs to be motioned?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the line of succession be approved as presented.
Second.
Properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Right hand? Against? Thank you. All right. Consider appointing five citizens to serve on the Mainland Planning Commission as nominated by the following commissioners. Commissioner Tosterson?
My nominee, uh, for Mainland Planning is Mr. Neal Boatright.
All right, are there any other nominations? Just, okay. Aaron, do we need to approve that one or can I go through them all?
You can go through them all.
Okay. District two is Commissioner Duncan.
I nominate Paige Edwards for the Mainland Planning Commission.
Okay. District three, Commissioner Neal.
I nominate Middleton Hall from District three.
Commissioner five, this, this, Commissioner Booker?
Nominate Darrell Dawson.
And I'm going to put Gary Neville back on for at-large post two. Term will begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2028. Now, do we need to vote on those?
You do.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the, uh, nominations as read.
Second.
Motion and second? Okay, all in favor? Against? Thank you, gentlemen. Next thing up is consider four appointments, four citizens to serve on the Island Planning Commission nominated by the following commissioners. District one, Commissioner Tosterson?
Mr. Chairman, I, I nominate, uh, Mr. Matthew Farmar.
Commissioner Duncan?
My nominee is Cortland Cook.
Commissioner Booker?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Odette Douglas.
And at-large post two, myself, Bryce Brock. Can I get a motion to approve these?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, properly motioned and seconded, all in favor? Okay, gentlemen, it looks like that's done. Do we have need for executive session?
We do, Mr. Chairman. We need, uh, one for Personnel, please.
Can I get a motion?
So move for executive session for Personnel.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Right hand? That's, uh, seven oh. Okay, we'll be in executive session for hopefully a short amount of time. I make a motion to come out of executive session? Motion and properly seconded, all in favor? Is it unanimous? We are adjourned.
I made a motion.
Motion to adjourn? Okay, properly motioned and adjourned, all in favor? We're done.